Such a calm. Who takes it? So what? With that. There you walk. Very.
Good evening. Welcome to this regular meeting in the Rancho Santa Margarita City Council. I'm going to call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Hallway, would you please read us an apology? Thank you very much. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Beal.
Here.
Mayor Potamaker.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Here.
Councilmember Hallway.
Here.
Thank you. Brings us to item one on our agenda, schedule of future events. The city manager, good evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor Beal and Mayor Beal, members of the council. The city of Rancho Santa Margarita invites the community to join the F W Post six zero two four at the Flag Day Ceremony on Saturday, June fourteenth, beginning at seven thirty P M. It will be held outside the Civic Plaza adjacent to Central Park. This tradition honors the American flag as it includes the dignified retirement of worn or unserviceable flags through a ceremonial burning in accordance with the U S Flag Code. This event is a time to reflect on the values the flag represents, freedom, unity, and service. Residents may also retire flags using the collection box created by a local Eagle Scout located in the Bell Tower Regional Community Center lobby. Next, on Wednesday, June twenty fifth, the Office of Assemblymember Kate Sanchez, the City of Rancho Santa Margarita, and the Orange County Fire Authority will be hosting a fire safety and preparedness community meeting at readiness expo. The event will take place from four to six thirty P M. at the Bell Tower Regional Community Center. This is a free event and no registration is required. The meeting will go over wildfire home resilience, evacuation preparedness, hands-on fire extinguisher demonstrations, smoke detector education, and animal preparedness. There will be booths from R S M Cert, Be Fire Safe, Mission Viejo Animal Services, Southern California Edison, Orange County Fire Authority, R S M Police Services Crime Prevention, and O C Fire Watch. For more information, please visit our city website, and there are flyers located in the back of the chambers. At this time, I would like to invite forward Wendy Reddington, Community Services Manager, to present the upcoming events, item number one point three and one point four.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor Beal, members of the city council. Hard to believe, but the city turned twenty five on January first of this year. And to celebrate, we're planning a celebration of community, twenty five years of cityhood on Sunday, June twenty ninth, from four to eight at Central Park. This free, family-friendly event will feature extended splash pad hours, inflatables and games for children, a photo booth, food trucks, face painting, balloon artists, booths hosted by our community center class instructors and community partners, Dreamers Market merchants, and of course, birthday cake and cupcake stations throughout the park. Residents can enjoy live music from two bands. From four to five thirty, the band Franklin Wall will perform country hits. And from six to eight, the band Those Guys will play a mix of crowd favorites from a variety of genres. Then, starting Sunday, July sixth, the Summer Concert Series will happen every Sunday night from six to eight through August tenth. This year's lineup will start with July, on July sixth, we'll start with the big rock show. And they perform rock pop top hits, and they're just a bundle of fun, a lot of higher energy. July thirteenth is the Flock of Eighties. Obviously, that's eighties pop with icons from Madonna, Duran Duran, et cetera. July twentieth, The Answer is Coming Back, and they do classic rock favorites. On July twenty seventh, Redneck Rodeo will bring in their country music and honky-tonk favorites. August third, Wayward Sons, a tribute band rocking hits from Journey, Queen, Styx, just to name a few. And then for the final concert on August tenth, we've extended the event and will include the Dreamers Market merchants again. And our local school of rock will showcase a band beginning at four o'clock. And then we'll wrap up the evening with a favorite from last year, the band is called Spin Town. They'll start at six with some funk pop and party favorites. So we look forward to celebrating with the residents and all their friends throughout the summer. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Wendy. All right, that brings us to item number two, Councilmember Comments and Reports. Two point one is Councilmember Comments. I'll begin to my left. Mayor Proten.
Thank you. I was very proud, along with Councilmembers Barrett and Figueroa, to attend the Best and Braveest Awards by put out by the Orange County Firefighters Association. It's an event to celebrate the selfless accomplishments of the firefighters that we know and love. One of them, Shane, right there in the back, and I was really honored to attend that presentation. It was a great event. And we all had a great time. I also want to congratulate the Cadet of the Year for Potaien Seven. It's our own Station Forty-Fives. Ian Kane, so, or Kane, excuse me. So it was a great event. I was happy to attend, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. To my right, Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone who made their voices heard at the last South Coast Air Quality Management District Meeting, opposed amendment rules eleven eleven, eleven twenty one. Were up for a vote by the board and was defeated seven to five. If these amendments have passed, they would have banned gas furnaces and water heaters, incurring extreme costs for homeowners. So just want to thank everybody who took the time to write a letter, make a phone call, and even attend the meeting. Your voices were heard and made a difference. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the South Orange County Watershed Executive Committee meeting in my appointed role last week. During the meeting, Carol Moore from the City of Laguna Woods was elected chair, and Doug Erdman from the South Coast Water District was elected vice chair for the upcoming year. Excuse me. Dr. Brett Sanders delivered an informative presentation on coastal erosion and strategies to mitigate it through the use of coastal sediment supplies. We also received an update on the Capistrano Dohini Beach Living Shoreline Project, which incorporates cobble burns, sandbags, and strategic sand placement to protect the shoreline. Additionally, we approved the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven through twenty twenty seven budget, which reflects a reduction of approximately fifty five thousand dollars due to decreased administration expenses. I also had the opportunity to join over fifty parents and children in the e-bike safety classes led by our outstanding R S M O C Sheriff's Deputies Dornbusch and Trujillo. I'm incredibly grateful to our deputies for organizing this important program for R S M families. The kids and the parents were highly engaged, asking thoughtful questions to better understand how to stay safe while riding e-bikes. It was encouraging to see such active participation and commitment to safety in our community. I appreciate the R S M O C Sheriff's Department for providing our families this learning opportunity. And then one final comment is to not miss the chance to experience the talents of one of R S M's extraordinary local artists, Naveen Ariyan, thanks to the R S M Carers Foundation. Her exhibit will be in the Bell Tower through June thirtieth, and it's an amazing collection that showcases the beauty of artistic expression and invites you to see the world through her lens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have sad news to announce tonight. Last Friday, we lost a beloved prominent citizen of Rancho Santa Margarita, a dedicated public servant and a former member of this city council, Christie Riley. Christie first was appointed to our city council in February first, two thousand and one. And she served with distinction through December of two thousand and two. And Christie was, as I mentioned, a prominent, very dedicated member of our city. She's a former member of the Board of Directors at South County Bank. She was a very active member of the R S M Chamber of Commerce. She was involved as a member of the R S M Historical Society. She was a longtime resident of Dove Canyon. And she was very proud of this city and always bragged about living here, and she was very honored to serve on our city council. And Christie is survived by her brother and sister-in-law. And I believe her brother Scott Scheller may be in the audience tonight. Scott, our condolences to you and your family. Christie was very special to all of us, and she'll be deeply missed. So we have this video presentation that's been playing, showing some of the highlights. She was involved at a critical time when our city was just getting started, before City Hall was built. And she played a very active and important role in this city. So God rest her soul, and tonight we will adjourn this meeting in honor of the memory of our good departed friend Christie Riley. All right. That brings us to item two point two, which is committee assignment reports. First up is the Foothill Eastern Transportation Authority. That is me, and I am our city's representative on the T C A Board of Directors. The highlight of our meeting, May eighth, was the approval of the budget for the transportation corridor agencies. This is a big budget with expenditures totaling over four hundred and twenty one million dollars. Two hundred eighty-two of that is for the Foothill Eastern T C A, and the balance, one hundred thirty-nine million, is the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency. The city of Rancho Santa Margarita sits in the Foothill Eastern T C A. One of the key highlights of what was passed is in the upcoming fiscal year, there will be a forty-seven million dollar early early paydown, a bond principal for the San Joaquin Hills T C A, which will save millions in interest payments over the coming years since we're paying off that bond loan early. We also set aside funding and phasing to advance three very important capital improvement projects, one of which I've mentioned many times, which is the two forty-one ninety-one Express Connector, so that you'll be able to bypass the long line of cars that backs up as you're on the two forty-one toll road heading to the ninety-one. We're anxious to get construction started. Once we receive approval from our partners at O C T A and in Riverside, we're ready to go and commence construction. The T C A will be funding one hundred percent of that multimillion-dollar project. The other two significant capital improvement projects include the seventy-three Catalina View improvements and the two forty-one Loma improvements. So big budget, lengthy process, and it's been approved and we're moving forward. All right. Next up is the Orange County Fire Authority. Mayor Proten McGurk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, my condolences to Christie's family. She was a very important person in this town. She was a very important spoke in the wheel, if you will, for the city council, and so we all share everything the mayor had to say about her. So again, my condolences to you. New Orange County Fire Authority, our last meeting, we had the proposed general fund budget presented to the Board of Directors, of which I'm a member on behalf of our city. And the budget is balanced for the year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and for all the five years thereafter in this particular budget. It's a big number, six hundred and forty-five million dollars plus. And thus a total fund commitment for twenty-five, twenty-six. But it includes something that enhances firefighting and paramedic services right here in Rancho Santa Margarita. Part of the budget would add a related firefighter, paramedic position as part of the staffing enhancement, and that would include four stations, including our Station Forty-Vibe over here off of Aventura. Also, it will convert Truck Forty-Five from a basic life support truck company to a paramedic truck company, converting six of the twelve positions to provide twenty-four-hour staffing for Truck Forty-Five to paramedic positions. Bottom line, that improves the response time for firefighting here in R S M. And I have a short video. I had the pleasure to do a flyover of our county, including the Burn Scar at the Holy Fire. If you take a look at this and you're wondering where is six hundred and forty-five million dollars spent and why it's important, this is right over Robinson Ranch. And if you look at it, what's brown is the burn scar, and what's green, some of it is new growth, and some of it isn't. There's the wash where everything started. Look at the top of the rich line. Half of it's burned out. Half of it is very, very green, looking like Ireland, and take a look. That's it. That's Tribeca Highlands right here. Robinson Ranch. And out here in the distance in a moment, you'll see Dove Canyon. It's beautiful though, isn't it, from the air? And hopefully it'll stay that way, but it's very important that we keep in mind the fact that these brave men and women of the Orange County Fire Authority are doing their very best day in and day out to keep us safe. And that airport fire, and prior to that, the Holy Fire had Santa Ana wind conditions existed at that point in time. We have some serious problems. So that budget was approved unanimously by the Board Directors, and I was proud to join in that vote. Again, six hundred and forty-five million dollars is going for a good cause, so to speak, and it's going to improve firefighting and paramedic services here in Rancho Santa Martin. Thank you, Andy. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Figueroa, Orange County Public Library Advisory Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know about Orange County Public Library's Summer Reading Challenge at all library branches from June sixteenth to August third. Participants of all ages can log their reading, win prizes, and can attend events that encourage especially children and teens to continue reading during the summer months. Also, O C Public Libraries offers a wonderful kindergarten readiness program for those with preschool children, so check that out. And for those that are interested still in getting their high school diploma, O C Public Libraries has a career online high school. And to date, seventy-eight adults have earned an accredited high school diploma here in Orange County. So we congratulate all of them, and for more info, please search O C Public Libraries. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That brings us to item three on our agenda, Presentations and Proclamations. Tonight, we have none. So we're now at item four, Public Comments. This is the first of two opportunities tonight to address the city council on any matter that is not listed on the agenda, but that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person and a time limit of fifteen minutes for this particular segment of the public comments portion of the agenda. There will be a second opportunity for public comments at the end of this agenda. First, I'd like to call attention to my council colleagues. We did receive three e-commerce in advance of our meeting. One was from Resident Sean Gordon, a suggestion regarding crosswalks at Empressa and Banderas in our business park. And we received two from John A. He did not give his full last name. And he is concerned with the ongoing illegal food vending operations that come in on a somewhat regular basis to our city and other cities. He does not like that, thinks it's unsafe, and says that many residents share that concern. As far as live speakers, I have one speaker request card, no others, correct? So I'm going to call for it at this time, Jaclyn Martin. Good evening. Welcome.
You know, it's kind of interesting that Brad McGurk shared that video of what it looks like up at the Burn Scar. I've been up there, too. I went up there on foot. We hike extensively in the area. And, you know, I noticed that we're having a fire safety meeting for the residents, but it entirely focuses on what residents themselves need to do. And my concern right now is that I've been up in that Burn Scar. They did an amazing job preventing it from burning much more extensively. But there's a lot of fuel up there still. And you're right, that if there had been wind conditions, things would have gone very badly, especially for families we know who live in Dove Canyon and our friends who live up in Robinson Ranch. So I want to know what our city council is doing to protect the community and harden our community against the risk of fire, because it's great, and I know all about the SCOTUS systems that our local water districts have to tell them whether or not we have pressure and fire hydrants. But if we don't do something to harden our community instead of spending millions of dollars on vanity projects to beautify, instead of hardening our systems surrounding, I've looked at the planning budget, and I've seen the one point six million that's scheduled to be spent on beautifying the area along Antonio Parkway. But what are we doing about making it more fire safe so that there are wind conditions when someone foolishly or deliberately sets a fire, like the Holy Fire that you mentioned? That we don't lose homes in our community. It's great that we can evacuate, but we don't want to be civic palisades, and if we had dealt with wind conditions, we would be. I also would like to know what we're going to be doing as a community about having our cops come out when residents call about illegal fireworks in our community, because July fourth is coming again. We've called almost every year. Some neighbors around us enjoy setting off full-size fireworks. Even ground fireworks are illegal here, and nobody ever comes. Last year, when we went to the park after the Fourth of July, there were burn marks all over Tribeca Mesa Park. There were burn marks on the grass. There were burn marks on the pavement. And we're just lucky that it wasn't a windy day, or that the giant half-dead eucalyptus tree that's right at the end of Antonio didn't get ignited by the people setting off fireworks along there, too. So I want to see what this council has in mind for keeping our whole community safe, instead of just putting it on homeowners and hoping that the next fire that's set, because there will be another one, isn't during windy conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I assure you that public safety is the city's number one priority. And all year, every year, the city staff works with the first responders from the Orange County Fire Authority, as well as the Sheriff's Department, to ensure the public safety of our residents. When it comes to fire prevention, we already harden all the areas around our city, anywhere near residential areas. That's taken care of. We work closely through the community associations of Rancho throughout the year to ensure that there is weed abatement, brush clearance, to keep fuel away from our homes. And we have regular interactions through that organization. The HOAs, including the sub-associations that represent individual communities, take that information back and share it with their residents. So the sorts of things that you were asking about have been completed and continue to be done on a regular basis. And if you want more information, we'd be happy to present that to you because it is available. With respect to the upcoming presentation, it is for residents. It's for their benefit so that we can share with residents how they can best protect their homes. As opposed to what you brought up, which is the public fuel areas, we want to make sure that residents have all the latest and greatest information. And that's why we are proactively putting on this big event, and I invite you to attend. Thank you for your comments.
Next up, I have David. It looks like Conid. Is that correct? Good evening, sir. Welcome. I hope I got your name right.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. My name is David Coning. I'm thirty-eight years old. I have special needs. I was born with heart of, half of my heart missing. I do not have a left ventricle. I've had three heart surgeries, and the doctor made two chemores and cut into one using tissue from a to beer. I had a stroke. I was a toddler and was dead for six minutes. Now I have seizures every month. I am thankful that I can take that I only have to take a baby aspirin for my part. I have seizure. I take seizure meds daily. I am one of the oldest survivors of a a condition called hypoplastic left heart syndrome. I live in Laguna Beach. I have group home for special needs adults. There are forty-five residents. I graduated from Laguna Beach High School. I'm currently looking for a job. I have friends that live in your city. I love the weather here and the mountains nearby. I would love it if you had a group home for disabled individuals in your city and would provide opportunities for work for people with challenges. I'm so thankful that God has allowed me to live. I am thankful for my parents, for their support. I believe that you, you must accept your situation, good or bad. You only have one life to live, and don't waste it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much for being here. I'm sorry you've had to endure the challenges that you have, but I'm so glad that you're with us and doing well and expressing such a positive attitude. So thank you, sir. I have no other speaker requests. Would anyone care to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to move on to item five on our agenda. This is the Consent Calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are to be approved in one motion, unless a council member, member of the staff, or member of the public requests separate action on any unless a council member, member of the staff, or member of the public requests separate action on any item. Do we need to pull any items from the consent calendar? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Which brings us to item six, Public Hearing Items. Six point one is a public hearing in compliance with Assembly Bill two-five-six-one, which is a report on the status of vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts. Ms. Kuda, I understand you'll deliver this report. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one was signed into law in two thousand and twenty-four. It established new requirements for public agencies to report out on job vacancy and efforts related to recruitment and retention of city employees. Specifically, local agencies must conduct at least one public hearing each fiscal year to present the status of vacant positions and recruitment and retention strategies. That hearing must be held prior to adoption of the single or multi-year budget as applicable. During that process, we are asked to identify any necessary changes to policies, procedures, or recruitment practices that can aid in hiring efforts. And we are to provide any recognized employee organizations the opportunity to present during this hearing. So the vacancy report, as you've received in your staff report during fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, three employees separated from city employment. Two of those positions have already been filled, and the third is currently in active recruitment. That recruitment actually, the filing period ended a couple of weeks ago, and we actually already have interviews set up to fill that position. So we looked at our hiring-related policies and procedures. We did not identify any barriers to recruitment. And so at this time, we're not recommending any changes to the employment or hiring policies at this time. So the recommended action tonight is to conduct the required public hearing and receive this report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council colleagues, any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. This would be the time for any member of the public to speak on this item. I don't currently have any speaker request cards. Would anyone care to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for discussion or action. You want a motion to approve, so I'll go ahead and move that we received and filed this report. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we'll take a vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Bringing us to six point two, the adoption of the Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program Budget Plan for Fiscal Year twenty-two thousand and twenty-five through twenty-six. The city manager, good evening again.
Thank you very much, Mayor Beal, and members of the City Council. It is staff's pleasure to present the twenty-five, twenty-six general operating and capital improvement program budgets. Recently, the City Council held a budget study session and reviewed all of this material. Ms. Turner and Mr. Parko are going to provide a high-level overview of the material, so it won't be exactly the same. But it does incorporate any discussion that the council had during the budget study session. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Turner for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. City Manager. So as she mentioned, her and I will be presenting the twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the city of Rancho Santa Margarita for adoption. The presentation will give an overview of the general fund, details about the city's revenues, expenditures, and reserves. There will be a presentation on the seven-year CIP. And then from there, we'll open the public hearing for dispensation and adoption of the budget. Again, always please stop me anytime if you have any questions or comments. So the city completed the twenty-four, twenty-five major budget update in March of twenty-five. These year-end estimates are the catalyst for the next year's budget estimates. Over the next two months, staff worked to develop and refine a proposed operating budget, and CIP budget was presented on May eighth, at the May eighth budget workshop. From there, staff took all of the information, comments, and direction given during that workshop and prepared the twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget and CIP for adoption at the June eleventh, twenty-twenty-five council meeting. So for a general fund overview, the table provides the information in front of you as an overview and comparison of the general fund revenues and expenditures between twenty-four, twenty-five amended budget and the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. The city is experiencing an increase in revenues mainly driven by growth of property tax and investment earnings. City is also experiencing an increase in expenditures due to various reasons, which will be discussed on future slides. The fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget reflects a proposed structural surplus of one hundred ninety thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars after some minor adjustments have been added based on current information. The proposed budget projects that the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six revenues will be two-point-three-five percent higher than the current budget. This increase is due to increases to various city revenue sources, but again, mostly property tax and investments. The expenditures increased by two-point-six-three percent, and this is mostly due to increases in the law enforcement contract, costs to meet city priorities, as well as continued inflationary pricing. There were a few adjustments to the general fund budget. The table reflects these adjustments, and part of it was due to changes to the CDBG estimate and the amount provided from HUD. And then other expenditures had to do with some additional training in the city clerk's office. Mission VA Animal Services gave us a slight updated number. And then additional twenty thousand dollars was put into building maintenance regarding additional holiday decor. This decreased the previous surplus by nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. And also, the general fund reserves was reduced by a hundred thousand dollars based on current financial software proposals we have received. So the following slides will be more detail and expectations about the city's revenues. So the general fund revenues are illustrated by category and reflect those adjustments mentioned earlier. Some areas to note are the sales tax revenue for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is expected to show minimal growth compared to the budget estimate, the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Sales tax will also be discussed later. Property tax is showing a positive increase compared to the prior year. The estimate from HDL was an increase of four-point-one-five percent. And with supplemental other property tax and also factoring delinquencies, it was up to five percent. This property tax growth includes a CPI increase of the full two percent, as well as property adjustments being restored. The franchise fees are expected to come in lower as unfortunately, the city continues to see a decline in cable franchise revenue. So at this time, this revenue has been adjusted based on year-end adjustments. And then if you go to investment earnings, these are expected to come in higher compared to twenty-four, twenty-five. But they do still reflect a conservative estimate. However, these possible adjustments, there may be possible adjustments as time goes on based on what the Federal Reserve may or may not do in regards to rates. And the graph in front of you just reflects how the revenues are split up amongst the various sources. And as you can see, sales tax and property tax do reflect a major portion of our revenue sources. To take, to speak a little bit more about sales tax, there have been some fluctuations over the last few years. And although the current fiscal year was a conservative estimate, sales tax receipts are still expected to be below budget. Staff took all of this into consideration, including the uncertainty regarding tariffs, inflation, consumer spending habits, and held the estimate for twenty-five, twenty-six fairly flat compared to the budget. Changes in sales tax revenue from category locations have stabilized as online sales continue to be an integral part of the city's sales tax mix. Some other reduction in sales tax stems from year-to-year comparisons where prior quarters saw significant gains due to inflation and also pent-up demand for various HCL has projected steady growth in sales tax revenue in future years and will continue to monitor missing and late payments to ensure revenue collection. So I'm about to enter into discussing more about the general fund expenditures. I will give a broader review of the city's expenditures. Are there any questions regarding revenue at this time?
We have any questions for staff at this time?
Okay, thank you. So in front of you is a chart of the expenditures by department, and it reflects the budget, the year-end estimate, and then the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget and those changes. The increase, we're expecting an increase in expenditures of six hundred and eighteen thousand, which is mostly due to the OCSD contract and various... But it has been offset slightly by some lower costs throughout the department budgets. All of these, and so all of these variances will be discussed in greater detail as I go along. The graph represents general fund expenditures by department. Animal Services has been identified separately from Police Services, and then from there, Police has been separated out for the city area expenditures, as well as crossing guard services. The contract reflects a total cost of approximately fifty-one-point-four percent of the expenditures, crossing guard services at one-point-seven percent, and city police services are at a low one-point-three. These costs relate to admin fuel, secondary processing, and other county charges. The other departments represent proposed expenditure budgets that reflect both increases and decreases throughout depending on project status, consulting contracts, pricing, and goals and other priorities of the city. To cover law enforcement, the information before you reflects an overview of the total cost of law enforcement as well as the contract. Police Services includes the contract as well as costs associated with supplies, radio, motorcycle maintenance, fuel, and parking citation processing, as I mentioned before. Taking all these costs into consideration, the Police Services budget increased by approximately six percent. The total law enforcement contract is twelve million four hundred eighty-six thousand, which equates to an increase in costs of six hundred thirty-two thousand nine forty-three or five-point-three-four percent. The cost to the general fund is twelve million three hundred twenty-six thousand, along with the use of selective funds of one hundred fifty-nine thousand towards the contract. Additional uses of selective funds include special event overtime costs of fifteen thousand, the purchase of EV bikes and other equipment of eighteen thousand one hundred dollars, and E-citation support of a thousand. The budget also includes the leasing costs associated with the flock cameras and an estimate for an additional ten cameras within the city. The annual lease is anticipated to be approximately one hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. To go into further into the general fund, the personnel costs are one of our largest expenditures for any city. The budget includes salary and benefits associated with performance-based increases and no cost-of-living adjustment, and is being proposed for an up-to-cost of one hundred ninety thousand six twenty-eight. There are no proposed increases to medical insurance, the medical insurance cafeteria allowance. The city pays towards its unfunded accrue liability, its UAL each year, and this year reflects year three of the payment plan. And the city is continuing with staff training and development. Within the general government group of departments, it reflects an increase mostly due to increasing reserve funds of CIP, technology expenditures within non-departmental. The CIP reserves are set at three-point-nine million. Again, HR saw increases in various insurances, especially general liability, property, and workers' comp. As the industry continues to experience unprecedented losses and insurance carriers have become risk-inverse, the city anticipates that we will continue to build history with the current risk pool. Costs will stabilize, and credits will be allocated to the city's flexible spending account now and into the future. Finance was held relatively flat, and the city clerk's budget was actually lowered due to no general election in twenty-five, twenty-six. So within public safety, the public safety of animal services and crossing guard services, the total proposed expenditure for animal services with Mission VA is five hundred twenty-seven thousand one fifty-seven, which represents an increase of fifty-five thousand or twelve percent. The increases are attributed to personnel costs as well as improvements to their shelters surveillance system and to the sewer lift system that cleans the kennels. This estimate does assume a small true-up credit as each year Mission VA does a year-end reconciliation of actual costs, and the city has historically received a credit each fiscal year. The amount for crossing guards, the amount included in the budget is the second of a three-year crossing guard contract and is approximately four hundred three thousand dollars. The contract provides services to nineteen designated locations. So to review Development Services, the Planning Department decreased approximately seventy-seven thousand due to completion of the updates to the local hazard mitigation plan and the circulation element this year. Building and safety is around seven, seventy-five hundred higher, but was, for the most part, was kept relatively flat. Although the city continues to experience steady permit activity, the building permit volumes and valuation added was similar to the prior fiscal year with just sort of a decrease in residential and offsetting increase in commercial. The city recognizes the importance of economic development activities, and the budget includes continued efforts at the ICSC Conference, support of the RSM Chamber of Commerce, and the CoStar Placer AI Services in regards to events planning projects, the upcoming year is anticipating minor zoning code updates, and anti-camping ordinance. Sorry. Within Public Works, they saw a decrease of one hundred four thousand or seven percent, mostly due to lower MPDES permitting costs based on the County of Orange and State estimates. A portion of the Public Works personnel costs have been allocated to various proposed projects. And the budget includes a line item for SB thirteen eighty-three state-required expenditures. These costs will be covered by the second CalRecycle grant allocation. Street maintenance increased by forty-six thousand dollars, mostly due to increased cost to the street sweeping contract for additional seasonal sweeping from October through April. This cost is estimated at approximately thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars and is funded with gas tax. The overall street maintenance contract was held relatively flat, and the budget includes funding for a routine and deferred annual striping of the streets. Building maintenance did increase by twenty-eight thousand seven thirty-five or six percent as it includes additional funding towards holiday decorations to take into consideration the new monument, Antonio Parkway. Utility costs were held relatively flat due to projected savings from our newly HVAC systems and the interior LED lighting conversion projects at both buildings. These projects have allowed the city to experience lower energy usage, which keeps costs down even with the annual increases in utility rates. So within Community Services, the Community Services budget reflects a three-percent decrease from last year but still maintains full operations and balanced staffing at the Bell Tower. Facility rentals remain in high demand with nearly all weekends booked and regular use of about forty different organizations. A wide range of classes for all ages continues to be offered with steady increases in enrollment at the center, which provides an opportunity to continue to expand usage of the entire building. Some of the areas considered are wellness workshops, enrichment programs, and civic engagement. The senior population is served through very popular classes, as well as the Senior Mobility Program, which provides free twenty-four-seven tax service to over four hundred residents age sixteen older. To manage rising costs, the department is shifting the Committee Living Magazine to a more cost-effective brochure format and enhancing social media outreach. The budget also supports key annual events, including the Summer Concert Series and special programming for the city's twenty-fifth anniversary. Overall, even with a little lower budget, the department continues to grow, adapt, and deliver high-quality services. So within community support requests, the Economic Development Budget does include funding towards RSM Chamber Rancho Family Fest event. The funding includes an allocation of twelve thousand towards law enforcement costs and an amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-nine towards the cost of stage sound and lighting, which will be paid on a reimbursement basis, as well as other in-kind costs. A community support resolution has been included for this request for City Council approval. For city council approval. At this point, I'll head into the general fund reserves and. Once I've finished this, we'll head in, we can go right into the CIP budget presentation.
Stephanie, why don't you pause just for a moment? Great presentation so far. Council colleagues, any questions regarding expenditures? Council member Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just, we're still learning about this new public safety tool or automated license plate readers. So Stephanie, this is going to be an annual new cost for us, the hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred, right, for the lease?
If we were to increase the camera, the number of cameras, that would be the new cost.
There, there's just an annual subscription fee. So there's the, kind of the initial lease and then an annual. The installation cost and then an annual subscription fee. So it won't be this amount every year, but it will be an amount every year. Chief Chapa, can you just talk to us a little bit, this is a new tool and we're still learning about it? How often you're using this new tool in the city in terms of, you know, keeping us safe here in Manchester, Margarita?
Yes, absolutely. So with the, the growing trends in crime, law enforcement has to keep ahead of the curve, so. Using this technology helps keep our cities safe. And our deputies use this, these tools almost every day. If not more than that, several times a day, they'll log into the system. Check and see if there's any vehicles of interest that insert the city. And they'll follow up and do investigations based on suspicious vehicles and vehicles that have been involved in criminal activities in other areas.
That's wonderful, David. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I want to point out for those in the audience and those listening at home. That there has been months of preparation that have gone into the preparation of this budget. By our city staff, prior meetings with the city council where we have already previously reviewed every line item in this budget. Tonight, it's before us for a final approval, correct? And as I've noted before. In my opinion, this is really the most important vote that we take each year. Because it sets our priorities, it tells the world who we are, what we believe in and what we're going to do. As a city, all of us together over the next year. And. Talk is cheap, especially in, in politics. What really matters is results. And could you go back to slide twelve real quick, quickly, please? In Rancho Santa Margarita, we've always put our money where our mouth is. Publics, I mentioned earlier. After our public speaker, Ms. Martin spoke. That public safety has always been and continues to be our number one priority. You can see right here, more than fifty percent of our budget is spent on public safety for our law enforcement contract. You don't see an entry in our budget here for an expenditure for fire. That's because the city of Rancho Santa Margarita's. Fire services are funded, we are a structural fire fund city, not a contract city with the OCFA. And so your property taxes, the property taxes paid for. By our residents is what funds our fire protection here. But we have always put our money where our mouth is and the results speak for themselves. When it comes to law enforcement. Once again, the city of Rancho Santa Margarita this year was ranked the number one safest city in the state of California. Number fifteen in the entire United States of America. And when it comes to fire prevention and protection. You may recall, we had a big fire that came to the outskirts of our community, the airport fire. We saw a video presentation of that earlier tonight. Not a single residence was lost in that fire due to the tremendous expertise, hard work. Preparation, proactive preparation by the Orange County Fire Authority. To make sure that our community is fully protected at all times. And I want to say thank you to them for the tremendous service that they provide. I mentioned also that there have been numerous public forums. Proactively put on by this city for the benefit of our residents. And we had a prior city council meeting, I want to say in the last couple of months, I can't recall the exact date. Where we summarized all of those and made all that information again available for residents. And I don't know if you recall what meeting it was, but I would urge anyone concerned about fire prevention or public safety. To follow up with us and we will make all of that information available. But I do want to stress. Public safety is, will continue to be the number one priority here. It's worth something we work on. Every day of the year to ensure that our residents and businesses are always fully protected. So it's a timely presentation tonight. I just wanted to highlight those aspects. When it comes to expenditures and especially with respect to the fire authority, how they're funded. And I want to take the opportunity to thank them for protecting us. Please, again.
I just want to say a little bit, I certainly agree with everything that. The mayor has said, but I want to point out to the Riley family. Christie's imprint is here. As I'm listening to this. She did a lot of the heavy lifting early on. So all the things that you're hearing about today, the fiscal stability. The safety issues here, not lack of issues, the safety of the city and what you're hearing that, and you're seeing. She had a lot to do. So I'm so happy that you're here seeing this. I mean, budgets aren't always the most exciting thing. Stephanie does a great job trying to spice it up a little bit, but. Her legacy will be here forever because she had a large part in. Us getting to this point. I just wanted to let you know that, again, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor Beal. So I'll head into just a quick overview of our general fund reserves. So the total city reserve balance for the audited year ending fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was thirty-eight point six million. Which includes the general fund and special revenue funds. Portion of this balance is restricted due to state and federal requirements and within the general fund, some of the balance has been encumbered for specific uses. Of the general fund balance, thirty-three point nine million is unrestricted as an amount used in the initial year of the reserve model. And they're based on major estimates and the current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. General fund balance is expected to be thirty-two point two million. Reserve model. Forecast revenues, expenditures and the user reserves over the next ten years. And the model for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six assumes an increase in general fund revenues and a steady. And say increasing expenditures based on anticipated increases in law enforcement contract as well as various inflationary impacts. It also reflects the use of reserve funds for operational expenditures related to a new financial software system. Audiovisual upgrade at the Bell Tower, consulting agreements for the EOC and a cost allocation plan, legal services, year three of the UAL paydown. Plan and some, and the use of the SB thirteen eighty-three grant funds. As a small area of zoning code updates along with various CIP projects. The model also anticipates the use of reserves in the future for the potential CIP. Based on this initial model, the general fund balance is expected to fluctuate around twenty-seven to twenty-eight million over the next six years. With growth resuming around fiscal year thirty-one, thirty-two. As always, this is a snapshot in time and projections may change depending on any future budget constraints. So the graph you see before you is just the visual representation of the reserve picture. Based on the proposed revenues expenditures and the use reserves of four point five million. The orange line representing the general fund balance is higher in twenty-three, twenty-four due to the ability to use ARPA funding towards governmental services. As well as significant growth in investment earnings. The graph shows the fund balance trending downward through fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six due to planned CIP projects. And then flattening out over the next few years. The orange fund balance, the orange line, the fund balance line stays within that twenty-seven to twenty-eight million mark over a six-year span. And then starts to climb up toward around fiscal year thirty-one, thirty-two. As mentioned earlier, this may fluctuate over the next couple of years based on the use of reserves. Also, safety balance is above its target balance, the yellow line. As reserves are strong and the city continues to be financially healthy, the target balance is based on the current approved reserve policy. This, this table represents the unrestricted portion of the general fund reserve balance and its various category. Balances or reflects the current policy restrictions and requirements. It starts with the estimated beginning balance reflects the change due to additional surplus and the user reserves. Which equates to the ending balance for twenty-five, twenty-six by category. Based on the policy, the emergency category has been adjusted to forty percent of the total fund balance. The adjustment was then allocated to other categories based on their percentage of total. And then a second adjustment was made to any category that was below the target bounds. These adjustments were made to ensure continuous stability throughout the reserve categories and the overall model. So at, this ends my portion of the general fund budget presentation. We will now move into CIP. Budget presentation, but before I start, are there any questions of, questions of staff regarding the general fund budget?
Last opportunity for questions at this point.
Mayor Beal, I would like to add something on the discussion regarding the reserves. Just Stephanie, could you go back a couple of slides to the chart, not the one, the one before? I just wanted to comment that the, the city is very financially sound and stable. And this level of reserves is probably one of the best reserve levels that a city could have. There are many cities in Orange County or across the state that do not have reserve levels of this amount. And, and one thing I think is also important to note is the city does not have a lot of debt. The only debt that we have is for this building that we're in that was constructed back in two thousand and four, opened in two thousand and four. The city was just starting out, the city was only four years old and didn't have any funds or reserves like this to be able to build that. Most cities, when they're building capital improvement projects of any kind of magnitude, maybe not the smaller ones, but larger ones. Have to bond out for those. We are in such a fortunate position that the city puts away funds every year to be able to. Complete our capital improvement projects by using reserve funds. So the fact that we have a healthy reserve balance. And we're able to pay as you go for our capital improvement projects is quite unique. And really something that is a testament to the council's conservative nature and ability to manage our finances.
Thank you, appreciate those comments and I, I just have to agree. Thirty, over thirty-two million dollars in reserves today. That's more than one entire year's operating budget. And that doesn't happen overnight. That's something that has been built up. Over the years by the hard work of our professional city staff and the prior council members and the members of this city council. Just enacting conservative fiscal policies. As I mentioned, we review every line item in the budget. We review every check in the warrant register when we have city council meetings. Because we have a fiduciary duty to protect and spend wisely precious tax dollars and this is the result. And once again, results matter. So thank you. Please go ahead and continue.
Thank you. So at this time, I am going to pass it over to our public works director, Joe Parko, and he will provide the presentation regarding the CIP plan.
Thank you, Steph. Good evening, Mayor Beal, members of city council. As Stephanie mentioned, I will be discussing the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement program. And if any, anytime you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask any questions. So this first slide is a citywide map of all of the projects that we are proposing for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. List all the projects and locations of the projects. There, this slide is small, but there is eleven by seventeen size map in your pop. This table shows the proposed projects broken down by the six project categories. As well as my total category budget and category percentages. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, staff is proposing a total of twenty CIP projects totaling a little over thirteen million dollars. This slide shows the CIP funding broken down by dollar amount and percentages. In the nine funding sources being utilized next fiscal year. The pie chart also reflects the revised CDBG funding. The CDBG funding has increased from a hundred and forty-two thousand to a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Since the budget workshop presentation in vain. The next few slides, I will list the projects by category. And again, please feel free to ask any questions you may have. There are five projects in the street improvement and maintenance project categories. As mentioned in the budget workshop, staff will be focusing on arterial and collector streets next fiscal year. In this street maintenance category. This category, we have the annual slurry seal project, the annual concrete repair project, ADA curb rant installation. And two major pavement rehabilitation projects on Santa Margarita Parkway from the city limits to SMP Bridge. And on Los Alisos from city limits to Altismo. We will have five landscaping and beautification projects. We will be continuing the traffic signal enhancements program on Plano Tribuco. And staff continues to make good progress with the Antonio Parkway Gateway Monument and Median Project. Next week, the stone will be delivered, d-delivered. So we should see the stone masons. Working on the placement of stone on the veneer of the monument. For the Antonio Parkway project, as a response to city council discussion and direction, staff has worked with the city's design consultant. For scope work to value engineer the current plans and specs and provide costs for possible bid alternates. For the proposed fencing, pilaster, lighting and landscaping. Staff will be back to city council to discuss these options in late July, early August. We also have the civic center non-functional turf replacement and monument landscaping project in this category. We have two projects in the city hall ETRCC category. The city hall panel project and the city hall BTRCC roof improvement project. The city hall BTRCC roof project is currently out to bid. We had a pre-bid walk yesterday with a lot of interest and good turnout with ten contractors showing up for the pre-bid walk with a lot of questions. Staff is starting the award of contract for this project in July with the start of construction in August. We have the Veterans Monument project in the special projects category. Staff has had initial discussions with Sam Lark staff to discuss the easement agreement needed to construct this project. We hope to have mockups of the monument for city councils review by early August. And we have four projects in the traffic improvements category. We have the traffic signal system maintenance. Intersection improvements at Los Flores and Antonio Parkway. And two signal synchronization projects at Santa Margarita Parkway and Antonio Parkway. And we have three projects in the bridge project category. The westbound Santa Maria Parkway Bridge hinge repair project, this is, this project is all about done. One field visit to complete the habitat restoration for this project. And the two ongoing bridge projects are the eastbound Santa Margarita Parkway and the Antonio Parkway Bridge Maintenance Projects. This last slide shows the breakdown by priority for seven projects utilizing general fund sources for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six projects. In the committed priority category, we have a total of two point two million dollars proposed in general funds. One point seven seven five million dollars of discretionary funding is proposed for a total of three point nine seven seven million. In general funds for these seven projects. That concludes my presentation on the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement part. I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Parko. Any questions for staff on the CIP? Nothing? Okay, thank you very much.
Well, then at this time, our recommendations is. To approve the following, a resolution adopting the operating budget and CIP budget plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Resolution adopting a seven-year capital improvement program. In conformance with renewed measure M two requirements. A resolution selling city's appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And the community support resolution for the RSM Chamber of Commerce. And that concludes all of the presentations and we're available for any questions or discussion.
And it seems that we have no questions at this time from the council, so I want to thank you, Stephanie. And Joe and the entire staff for all the hard work for many months to bring us to this point. Great job, really, really well done. Um, at this point, then, I'm going to open the public hearing. This would be the time for any members of the public that wish to speak on the budget. Uh, I don't currently have any speaker request cards. Do we have any?
We have none.
Anybody care to speak on the budget? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing and turn the matter over to the city council for discussion and deliberation. Maybe like to kick us off, Councilmember Holloway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to thank the city staff for all the work. If anybody's wondering why we don't have more questions tonight, it's because we've asked several hundred questions in prior meetings and um, have done our research with, with ourselves and, and the staff. So um, they've done a tremendous job putting this together. Um, I'd like to commend the uh, sheriff's department. I feel like the, uh, our current sheriff, Barnes, has been the most proactive sheriff we've had in quite some time. Um, from a technology standpoint, also trying to maintain a reasonable budget and an ever-increasing um, cost world that we live in, both from technology and, and personnel, like he's done a great job keeping things uh, reasonable. And, and really, he's ahead of the curve with uh, advancing the sheriff's department into uh, the next level of technology, which um, he, he's done, and then we're, we're certainly uh, a participant in that. So I, I feel like the uh, the budget is um, reasonable and money well spent. Um, always want to remind people to shop and dine in Rancho because you saw the sales tax revenue. That's where, that's really our meat and potatoes of, of revenues. So as often as uh, we can, we like to send that message. Uh, but again, really just thanks to staff and, and um, for all your hard work and putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly, thank you for, for another extensive budget uh, performance, if you will, I, I appreciate it very much. That, as Councilmember Holloway indicated, for those who weren't aware, we had public meetings on the budget, more than one in May. And was it June? May. We had one, we ended up having just one, long one, very long one. Um, so that's, that is why we don't have a lot of questions, because we've gone through it already and to get to this point, we'll be going to prove it, so. Um, we're in great shape, we're in the black again, year after year, and I'm very happy to see that. And I stand on approving the budget, voting to approve the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. To my right, Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, it's a proud night seeing this budget and thank you, Stephanie, to your staff, to our city manager, all the department heads too. You guys all spent a lot of time putting your numbers together for your individual departments. And um, I'm sitting here as a proud city council member, looking at this budget tonight, as I know all my colleagues are as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bear.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too want to reiterate my thanks to um, Ms. Turner, Mr. Parko, um, and Mrs. Sarantes for sitting down with me and going through, this is my first budget to really look through. And um, they spent a lot of time with me as we went through the weeds of things, explaining things to me, answering all of my many questions. And so I, I really appreciate all the time that you spent with me and um, your staff in preparing this. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things about um, the um, the sheriff's budget and some of the things that um, are in it that I find exciting about that we are now offering for our community are the e-bikes. And I wanted to bring that up because I think that's really something that um, will help in our community and continue um, engagement with our, our younger citizens in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I just want to know, we should never take any of this for granted. We sit here tonight and Rancho Santa Margarita's financial position is very strong, it's stable, and by all projections, the future remains very bright in Rancho Santa Margarita. Not every city can say that. There are cities, even neighboring cities to Rancho Santa Margarita, not in this position, they wish they were. And once again, it's just uh, the result of years of hard work by so many people. We have a great team here and I'm, I'm, I'm so proud to be part of it. So um, at this point then, uh, I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt uh, this budget and we adopt um, the resolution as listed in our agenda. The staff's recommendation, uh, all of the resolutions, do I, I don't need to read each of them word for word, do I?
No, sir, it's sufficient to reference the listing in the staff report.
Yeah, uh, all, all of uh, move that we adopt, the staff recommendation is listed in the agenda in the staff report. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, unanimously. Thank you all. All right, item seven, new business, proposed resolution establishing classes of regular employment, salary ranges and benefits for employees with the city and rescinding resolution number twenty-four oh-six twelve-ten. This is you, Ms. Kuda. Hello again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Employee salary ranges and benefits are set annually by resolution of the city council. Each year, in anticipation of budget development, staff prepares a compensation study in accordance with city council policy three point two. This involves evaluating salary and benefits data from eight specific cities in South Orange County. Those are listed here on this slide. Part of the methodology involves in uh, comparing the city's top step salaries for each position with the average of the top step salaries for the same positions in those comparable cities. This slide summarizes the actions taken last year compared to the staff recommendations for this upcoming fiscal year. So last year, uh, the council approved salary range adjustments of zero to five percent based on the average top step salary of the surveyed cities. The city council also approved minor adjustments to four positions for organization, organizational parity within classification types. Last year, we instituted bottom range adjustments to establish a thirty-five percent range for all positions. This keeps our starting salaries competitive uh, as well as our top step salaries. We increased the cafeteria allowance by one hundred dollars per month last year from nineteen hundred to two thousand dollars. And we made some revisions to the comprehensive annual lead buyback program. By comparison, this year, we found that the city's top step salaries are about three point seven three percent lower than the peer cities. So we are recommending salary range adjustments of three point seven five percent to all classifications based on that average. Uh, we are also keeping consistent with the bottom range adjustments, making those thirty-five percent for all positions. We're not recommending a cafeteria plan allowance increase this year. And we are proposing to add one new part-time job classification, and that is the recreational leader two position to allow for some um, promotional opportunities within the community services department. Uh, S B fourteen thirty-six requires that we report out the compensation or benefit changes to executive manage posi, uh, executive management positions. Those are defined as one of the following, a person that is a chief executive officer, deputy chief executive officer, or assistant chief executive officer of the local agency, a head of a department or local agency, and the person's position which is held by a contract. This slide here shows those uh, current's top step proposed increases. They are consistent with the three point seven five percent increase that I mentioned earlier. And this slide uh, determines our S B fourteen thirty-six compliance. So the recommended action tonight is to adopt the salary resolution for the upcoming fiscal year as shown on your agenda. I am uh, happy to answer any questions you have this.
Thank you, Ms. Kuda. Any questions for staff? Uh, Councilmember Holloway.
Thank you. On the subject of uh, recruitment and retention, um, it gives an idea, and also the people listening, um, roughly the numbers of, of employees that have left in the last year. Um, what our, our retention looks like and what the future looks like for any kind of recruitment.
Um, our retention is, is very good. We did have three people uh, leave last year for various reasons. One was a part-time person, two were full-time employees, uh, as the part-time person has uh, that position has been filled. Um, one, the one full-time position has been filled, the more recent vacancy is, as I mentioned earlier, uh, currently in process. So we've got some great candidates, um, even, you know, lateral moves from other, other cities. So I think our retention efforts uh, and our, our salary ranges are, are working because we're getting really good um, response when we do have a recruitment.
Do we have difficulties uh, recruiting new employees? Or are there um, enough quality candidates uh, for all the positions and based on what we pay?
Yes, we've had, we've had good um, good response to part-time and full-time positions um, throughout the year and prior years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holloway, I'd also like to add to that. That the last several recruitments that we've had, we've had a lot, a very strong candidate pool, um, which was not the case, I would say, a couple of years ago. And some of that's just due to the job market and some of it's due to the types of positions that we have available. It's always very difficult to recruit uh, quality candidates for department head positions just because it's such a high bar. Um, and there just aren't as many people, I'm happy with the ones that we have. Um, they, you know, they've done a great job, but it, it adds a tough job to fill. Um, but in the, the last few recruitments that we've had, which have not necessarily been for uh, department heads, we've had really strong candidate pools, um, and we're, we're really pleased with, with uh, the applications that we received.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, um, this would be a time for any member of the public to speak on this item. I don't have any speaker request cards. Any member of the public here to speak? Okay, seeing none then, um, I'll turn it over to my city council colleagues for any discussion or for a motion.
I'll move the item.
No second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Brings us to seven point two, which is an introduction and first reading of a proposed ordinance relating to camping on public property. Ms. Kuda, busy night for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, but this uh, ordinance was uh, primarily produced by our city attorney's office, and we have Jason McEwen with uh, Woodruff here to present the item tonight.
Good evening, Jason. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, as Ms. Kuda said, my name is Jason McEwen, I'm with the city attorney's office, and I'll be presenting on this proposed camping ordinance. Uh, as a bit of background, historically, California cities have had the ability through police powers to regulate camping activity within their jurisdictions. Uh, in January, I'm sorry, in two thousand nineteen, however, the uh, Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals uh, hindered that ability by uh, issuing a decision that said that uh, enforcing camping ordinances against homeless individuals when there were no shelter options available within those particular jurisdictions constituted cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Uh, however, last year, the U.S. Supreme Court took that issue up and overturned the Ninth Circuit's opinion in uh, this case was the city of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson. The purpose of the ordinance that we're putting forth tonight is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Um, it would be to prohibit unpermitted camping activity on city-owned property, as well as to regulate the storage of personal property on city-owned property. Uh, some key definitions to the ordinance would be camping to camp is to, to pitch or occupy uh, camp facilities, uh, live in camp facilities or outdoors, uh, including in a vehicle, or to use camp paraphernalia. Uh, intern camp facilities are defined as tents, huts, or similar, uh, similar temporary structures or shelters. And camp paraphernalia, uh, the definition includes things like tarps, cots, beds, blankets, sleeping bags, uh, cooking equipment, outdoor cooking equipment, and similar items. Uh, the operational regulations essentially prevent camping uh, activity at any city-owned property in the city, including maintaining any type of uh, temporary shelter, uh, camping, which would also include living within a vehicle, and the storage of personal property on city property. Enforcement, violations of this ordinance would constitute misdemeanor criminal offenses under the code and would be uh, could be prosecuted as such. Um, law enforcement, as it always uh, has with respect to any city code, would have the discretion to give warnings or issue citations and/or arrest offenders if necessary. And in the case of um, the camping ordinance, specifically things that are historically done are outreach, and that's something that the city already does um, and when, when necessary for uh, camping around the city, uh, should those issues arise. Um, this ordinance also has provisions related to eviction. So if there are individuals who repeatedly violate uh, the camping ordinance, they could be evicted from specific city properties. And there's a due process, there's an appeal procedure that is available to those individuals should that happen. But it's another tool that uh, the city and law enforcement would have in the event of repeated violations. Um, so the recommendation this evening is to receive the staff presentation, uh, introduced for first reading by title only, uh, and wait further reading of the ordinance as indicated in the staff report. And with that, I'm available for any questions that council may have.
Appreciate that report, Mr. McEwen. Any questions for our staff? I'll start to my right this time. Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Jason, for being here tonight. Um, just wondering, um, how many other cities in South Orange County have adopted an anti-camping ordinance already? Do we know that?
Nearly all. Um, in, in Orange County in general, there are thirty-four cities, twenty-eight have anti-camping ordinances that are currently on the books. Uh, there are five additional that have not necessarily something that would be uh, prohibiting camping, camping entirely outright, but something that would uh, be prohibiting like overnight camping or sleeping in vehicles overnight, things like that. So it's, it's the vast majority.
So we're actually one of the last cities in South Orange County to adopt this.
To adopt camping specifically, yes, the city does have uh, provisions already in the code, which we are updating to simply for consistency um, that prohibits sleeping in vehicles overnight. Um, so that's already on the books, but this would be uh, the, the first time that we're, we would be proposing something to prevent camping uh, in general.
Okay, and this question, I'm not sure if it's for you, Jason, or for city staff, but um, an individual will be warned first, is that correct? Prior to a fine being levied.
That would be within the discretion of the enforcement official. If, if, if in the discretion of the enforcement official, a warning was warranted, then yes, absolutely, that could be done. And generally, just in my experience and, and handling these types of uh, ordinances as a prosecutor throughout my career, that is something that is done relatively regularly, would be giving some form of warning first. There are certain aspects of this ordinance that would require a warning first, um, which, uh, for example, would be the use of a, a loitering in a restroom. That provision, which was actually already in the municipal code, requires a warning before any type of citation would be given. There's also a warning required, or at least one for a citation that's required before the eviction process could be used.
Okay, and this would generally be an enforcement officer that would be giving either a warning or levying a fine.
Right, and that would be, it could be code enforcement, it could be um, law enforcement, it could be anybody, there's actually provisions that are, anybody designate, might be designated by the city manager as an enforcement officer.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Certainly.
Come in, uh, Councilmember Holloway.
Thank you. Excuse me. A couple of questions, Jason. Um, there's a, there's a few different uh, words here that I want, want you to clarify for me.
Sure.
Um, eviction in reference to this situation. Describe a, assuming the bulk of the people we're talking about are homeless. And I think we're, what was the latest count of homeless? Five, six?
Seven.
Seven, okay, slim ball part. So a, a person that is in violation observed um, by either, and stop me if I'm wrong, either law enforcement or code enforcement, they have the same authority here, correct, that you just described?
Correct.
Okay, they see someone camping. Describe that process. They have a conversation, what I understand, and tell me if I'm wrong. They have a conversation, it looks like you're in violation of, of our camping ordinance, um, you need to move on. Is that the definition of eviction as written in the ordinance? Or is eviction more of a physical move of the person and their property?
It would be the, the former. It would be the citation or the warning and then the order, and which would need to be a written order under the ordinance for due process purposes. It's a written order that would explain that this individual is no longer permitted to be on that specific portion of city property based on the violation of the ordinance. And that returning to the area instead of having to have any uh, probable cause in terms of camping on the property, law enforcement would then have the ability to cite or enforce for uh, failure to comply with the eviction order. So it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily have to have camping equipment or be sleeping on, on that portion of property. Now it would simply be being in that property.
So again, it's up to, and I, I agree with uh, law enforcement or code enforcement having uh, the ability to use their discretion in these situations. uh the ability to use our discretion in these situations. Um, when you're talking about moving, having them move from that location, clearly, if they went to another location that was as described here and did the same thing, they're not able to, it's not like you get a warning for each specific location you might be camping in, correct?
Correct. Once, once there is a violation, you can be evicted from that property. And and yes, in in my experience, just throughout Orange County and the cities that that I deal with, law enforcement and city personnel are overwhelmingly willing to work with individuals to do something short of citing and arresting, and they will attempt to get them services, attempt to get them into shelters. And when that doesn't work, then the citation comes. So that's a whole process that would exist, and it it happens almost universally. But when that person moves to another location on a different location in city property, that's when you can go straight to a citation, straight to arrest if necessary.
So the warning obviously is recorded, but they decide it's not just a verbal only, it's a written warning that goes into some database that can be accessed if it happens with another deputy or or um code enforcement officer at another time, correct?
That would be a question for for the chief in terms of the recording and how how the sheriff's department would do that as far as their process. Uh, but that is something that we would recommend for code enforcement, if they would would be doing enforcement so that we do document and and we are able to show here are the outreach services, here are the steps that we took short of enforcement prior to resorting to that use of enforcement.
I'm gonna make the assumption that the bulk of these contacts will be by the sheriff's department because code enforcement is not necessarily working at midnight, and people are trying to sleep. So has that been established, chief, in terms of the process?
Yes, correct. I have uh some experience in this area, so I I previously came from Beach City where we used to enforce these uh anti-camping ordinances, and you are correct, my experience is the deputies will go out, they can give a verbal warning that's documented internally in our CAD system, which means anyone in the sheriff's department can access that information and see that there was a warning given, and then we can take the next appropriate steps afterwards.
And in in terms of just following this process, somebody gets the citation, okay? Um, they're not going to jail to get the citation, and I'm not suggesting they should. Um, they have to take care of the the citation, however, that the process, so is the process through city code enforcement, or is it processed through the county of Orange? That citation, if you write one.
So the citation is going to be a municipal code violation, so that's going to be, so the uh the city's DA's office, the city attorney will handle that uh violation. If it continues, we can also take someone to jail for repeating that violation for likely to continue. So if the same violation is committed, let's just say the same day or shortly after, we can actually take that person to jail.
Okay.
And my office would prosecute the violations of this ordinance, as well as violations of the eviction provisions should they have uh been utilized.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. No questions, have comments later, but no questions. Okay. Um, so I was very pleased last year when the U.S. Supreme Court issued its City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson case, which restored to local agencies um the authority to regulate this type of activity. That's great, and I'm very pleased to see this agenda item before us. Um, I think that's great as well. Couple of quick questions. Um, camping. Is there any sort of timeframe that must expire uh before it constitutes camping, or the moment somebody puts up a tent with the intention of being there, is that a violation immediately? Or must they be there for a certain period of time?
There is no time restriction, there's no certain amount of time that must have have passed before it would be a violation of the ordinance.
Okay. We've talked a bit about who will enforce a violation, that could be code enforcement or law enforcement. And if uh a member of the public were to observe a violation, would they be able to call, do they call the police?
Yeah, they could call the police, they could call code enforcement, they could call either, as as both have the authority to enforce the ordinance.
Okay. So, um, during your presentation, something occurred to me, it's a little outside the box, uh I wonder if it fits within the box at all. Um, if somebody were to come into Rancho Santa Margarita, assuming we pass this ordinance, and they uh put up uh a pop-up tent, they put uh a folding table, you know, a pop-up table like you buy at Costco or something, um, some sort of cooking appliances. Um, those are all camping facilities and camp paraphernalia according to this definition, right?
Right.
Okay.
The pop-up table that might be, I mean, in general, yes, but a pop-up table that by itself might not necessarily be meet the definition, it would depend on the use, the the intent of the ordinance is for living purposes, essentially for living, sleeping purposes.
So it must be for living purposes. What I was getting at is, we've already adopted with respect to illegal street vendors that we already had a member of the public comment upon today. I was just curious if we could uh bootstrap this type of um local ordinance to add additional enforcement mechanisms for s- uh someone that comes into town, puts up a pop-up tent, a table, um, a hot plate, and starts trying to sell food illegally in our city. Uh, can they, can a member of the public, because I get a lot of complaints about this, could a member of the public call the police and they now respond and say, you're illegally camping in the city and have them removed? Because historically, we haven't been able to do it on our own. Do you think that's something the city might be able to do? Arguably, under this?
I I think under the letter of this ordinance, there, those types of situations could potentially be violations. I think it would be case by case. Um, particularly if you have things like cooking equipment that are not permitted. I think those types of things are, that's directly in the ordinance, it's it's right there within the definition. So I think those types of things fit squarely within the ordinance. Things like pop-up tables, y- you get into the situation where you're looking at somebody who might put up a pop-up table at a park for a picnic that is not intending to camp, they're using it for the intended purpose of the park or or the community center. So it's it's slightly different. So I I it's, it could be based on a specific situation and and whether or not in the eyes of the law enforcement officer, this fits within the purpose of the ordinance, which is to prevent camping.
So just for purposes of the argument, if there's a violation, law law enforcement is called, it's clearly a violation, and we've talked about an eviction. Um, is is that something that is carried out at that moment, are in certain circumstances?
The eviction?
Yes. They can be told, you must move now.
Right, that would be, that would be the warning. Once they are, i- if they refuse to move, then they would be cited, and the eviction would come through some form of written formal eviction that would come from the um, it would be the Public Works Department, uh the Public Works Director would issue the eviction notice, it's written and has appeal procedures and things like that. I think what what, Mr. Mayor, you're you're talking about is more physical removal from a location.
I heard about taking people to jail, um.
Right, that would be at the discretion of law enforcement officers under certain situations. If if it was somebody that within the uh the view of the law enforcement officer, this is something that's going to continue. If this individual is not physically removed and arrested, then they could take them into custody at that time.
Interesting. Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no um members of the public that have asked to speak on this item. You have nothing, right? This city clerk?
Have none.
Anybody care to speak on this item? All right, then, seeing none, I'll turn it over to my council colleagues for discussion and action. Anybody here to begin? Mayor Potem.
Just for the benefit of those in the audience or those who might be listening at home, um, just to give you a little little background, the history lesson, and and Mr. McEwen hit it, he talked about it well. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals covers a bunch of states. It's a federal jurisdiction covering California, Arizona, Nevada, Oregon, Washington, Idaho, Montana, Hawaii. And it it passed a case, it had a case called Martin v. Boise back in twenty eighteen. And as Mr. McEwen pointed out, it held that to uh move somebody off a public walkway or public property who happens to be homeless would be a violation of the Eighth Amendment, barring cruel and unusual punishment unless there's a facility that you could take this person to, and it has to be a non-religious facility, you couldn't take them to a Catholic uh home or anything such like that. So that happened in twenty eighteen, and those states that I mentioned, throughout those states that I mentioned, for the next number of years, there were just consistent complaints going up in the courts as to the inability for municipalities or counties to do anything, frankly, about the homeless situation. And I think we all remember how it just blew up, if you go up the five freeway or the four oh five freeway, if you go up to Oregon at the five freeway, from Eugene to Portland, you can go almost anywhere in the Ninth Circuit and see the effects of Boise v. Martin. And it wasn't until the Grants Pass case came down, with the Supreme Court went the other direction on this, and basically allowed cities to manage this problem um in a manner that is is consistent with uh the law. Um, make no mistake, I don't think there's, I haven't talked to anybody up here about it, but I don't think there's any council member that is eager to see homeless people in Rancho Santa Margarita get arrested. That's not the goal here. The goal is, number one, to provide outreach and assistance to those who need it. No one volunteers, well, maybe they do, but in general, people don't volunteer to be homeless, they have an issue that they're dealing with. And so job one is to provide the outreach necessary to help those people. But also, we have to look out for the remainder of the of the community, our city in large, and you might remember the number of individuals who were homeless living by the library. Uh, technically, the library is not city property, it's county property, but they face, the county of Orange faced the same issue that we did. So there was nothing that could be done, virtually nothing that could be done. And so um by passing an ordinance such as this, which is something that's necessary, and other cities have the same ordinance on the books, we can do something, we can provide outreach, and we can also uh assist the rest of the community in dealing with this. We have issues in this city over by Santa Margarita High School. Uh, someone living in their car and urinating out in front of the school daily. Um, that needs to be addressed, that's not something you ignore. And so um I'll be supporting this uh one hundred percent, and and I'm happy that uh the Supreme Court uh actually came along and overturned Boise v. Martin and allowed uh our city and Mission Viejo and every other city in our community, in our area to really do something about the homeless situation. Again, not necessarily criminalize it, but to help these folks and find some way, some cohesive manner in which we can address a very serious problem. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I support this proposed anti-camping ordinance because we'll provide our law enforcement officers with a necessary and lawful tool to maintain the safety, cleanliness, and accessibility of our public spaces in Rancho Santa Margarita. Importantly, the ordinance balances enforcement with compassion. It explicitly allows the city to continue its outreach efforts to assist individuals experiencing homelessness. The goal is not to criminalize homelessness, but to maintain public areas for general use while also encouraging unsheltered individuals to engage with available services and support systems. Overall, I believe this ordinance will help protect public resources, promote the responsible use of our community spaces, and support ongoing efforts to address homelessness in a coordinated and compassionate manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there was one sentence in our report here that I think sums this up perfectly. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to establish clear regulations on camping and storage of personal property in public areas while allowing the city to continue its efforts to provide unsheltered individuals with homeless outreach services. So I think that sums the whole thing up beautifully, and I'm happy to move this item.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Before we call for the vote, I just want to make a few comments. Um, and I think my council colleagues have said it well. I have great sympathy, compassion for those that are truly experiencing homelessness. Um, especially those that might be doing so because of a job loss, the death of a breadwinner, you know, some unexpected health issue, something like that. Um, that's tragic. Thankfully, there are resources that are out there and available, and I know that our city is aware of those that are in our city and uh homeless, and we have reached out to them, we've made them aware of what those resources are, and sadly, um, those that are on the streets at this point, at least those that we're aware of, they choose to be there um and remain there, and that's because of this, we heard, you know, they've got some kind of issue, whether it's some sort of mental issue. Uh, if they're on a substance, a substance abuse problem, you might not be able to get into certain um homes because that's just not permitted. Um, but, you know, that's a tragic situation, and while I have great sympathy and compassion for those uh folks, we need to also look out for the health, safety, and welfare of all fifty thousand residents and ensure that our public spaces are available for the enjoyment of all, and we don't have any of these sorts of negative situations that have been referenced occurring in our great city. So we have a motion, a second, unless there's any other comment, I'm gonna call for the vote.
If I could, please, yes, calling for the vote, I would ask to please read and introduce the title of the ordinance for the record.
Um,
I'd be happy to do that for you if you'd like.
Okay, because your font's too small for my eyes. You've got your glass, this is, go away.
So, well, so before the city council for consideration this evening is an ordinance of the city of Rancho Santa Margarita, California, adding chapter six point one three, camping in public areas to title six, public safety and welfare of the Rancho Santa Margarita Municipal Code related to camping on public property and amending section twelve point zero two point zero three zero in chapter twelve point zero six, sleeping in vehicles of title twelve, vehicles and traffic of the Rancho Santa Margarita Municipal Code related to sleeping in vehicles.
Well done. Thank you. Colleagues, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. All right, item eight is continued items. Tonight we have none. So we're now at number, agenda item nine, public comments. This is the last opportunity to address the city council on any matter not listed on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. I do have one speaker request card. If anyone else cares to speak, um, fill out a card, give it to our city clerk. At this point, I'm gonna call forward Amber Blumer.
Hi.
Hi, good evening, Amber. Welcome.
Um, I wanted to just ask for anybody that watches the recording, the budget that you presented, thank you very much for the detail. Um, is there somewhere online that people can find that detail? Because my camera wasn't picking it up in too much detail. So it's online in the city or in the city webpage?
Yes, a- actually, every presentation, video, PowerPoint that is presented to the council is uploaded to our city clerk's page in accordance with the uh agenda for the meeting in advance of the, right before the meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
And and it's been that way for quite a while.
Great, thank you. That will help everybody who's now gonna start watching, be able to know where to get all the information. Um, I also wanted to ask in terms of transparency for the city council, as you saw, I've got a camera on a tripod tripod. I have to admit, it's a pretty bad recording at this point in time, my camera is not picking up quite everything. I know that it's been addressed before about transparency for the city. It's my understanding that Rancho Santa Margarita is one of the last two cities within Orange County to not have any video recording of their city meetings. And I'm curious, I think La Palma is the only other one that hasn't, and it's my understanding they're actually starting to investigate having video recordings of their city meetings. I'm curious as to what's holding us up. I think it would be really good in terms of transparency. I think as we've seen tonight, it actually gives you an opportunity to speak to people in our community and help other people in the community understand things like the budgets, proposals. I think it's a really great way to communicate with people in the community, and I'd like to encourage the city to consider even further, despite it not being in the budget currently, how we can get a really even just cheap solution of getting a phone on a tripod or something, maybe a little bit more professional, but it doesn't have to cost too much money. So I'd like to have that be uh my suggestion.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. You're you're probably where we do currently have live streaming, audio standing.
It's very hard to hear who's speaking and keep track of the conversation in that audio.
Okay, um, you may be aware, you may not, there's currently some legislation being contemplated in Sacramento on this very issue that may mandate that cities um have live streaming of audio or video. Um, so that's something that I think the this city and other cities are watching carefully. Uh, there's costs involved, and um there there have been negative consequences sometimes that come when you start televising meetings. And um there there have been negative consequences sometimes that come when you start televising meetings, so. Um all of that we will uh take into uh consideration as we watch this legislation move forward. Okay, but thank you very much for being here and thank you for your comments. I I have no other speaker request cards, would anyone else care to speak tonight? Alright then, uh we will move on to item ten, which is the city manager's report, the city manager.
I have nothing this evening, thank you very much.
Okay, item eleven is matters presented by the mayor and council members, start to my right, anything further? Councilmember Holloway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um two things, just wanted to address the uh the woman that came up earlier and talked about um fire safety. Um some good points that she brought up, um I just wanna uh convey a situation that I had. Um I called the OCFA, went to their website, and actually, two days after my request, a civilian uh. Employee from OCFA came and did a uh a safety, a safety fire check at my house. Um front and back and sent me a written report as to what they suggested that I do to um. Do the best I can to fireproof um my house, and of course, there are neighbors that saw the, you know, the OCFA car come up. And they also uh took advantage of that service, um very helpful, cuz we we did what we could. And what they suggested um we do to make our house as safe as possible, from embers and the onions to everything else you can imagine, so. That um was very beneficial service that the OCFA um offers free of charge. Um and again, it was, it was two days after I made the call, got an appointment, they came out, it was a a good experience and. Uh we feel a lot safer based on what we were able to do, so I just wanted to let let you know that, that's available. Second, second thing I want to bring up is, I've had some discussions with our city manager. Um and uh about a subject that I'll uh discuss, but I need a little bit of um council support. Cuz a a staff needs to put together a a a report, um it might take a little bit more time than one council member can authorize. Um I'd I'm, the idea of um recognition of some sort. Um of Tony Moisso and Richard Reese and what they did together uh to form this city and the impact that they have. We've had some discussion about the forms that might take from, all the way from something similar to the ironworks statues that you see around the city. Which are completely off the table cuz they're very, very expensive, to plaques, to um some etching, something that we could. Um put together that has them together, cuz we obviously have Richard Reese Way, um he's got, already been recognized and has a park bench, but. What they did together, I'd like to have staff spend a little bit of time and Jennifer can talk a little bit more about what that might entail. But I need more than one, more than myself to get that support, for staff to just look at some options for recognition that possibly. The things should be done quick enough that we might be able to present at one of our concerts or maybe even the the twenty fifth anniversary of it. If it could be done, so turn over to Jennifer, just to maybe explain a little bit about this.
So it is not uh unusual for cities to commission what essentially is a work of art or public art. Uh to commemorate uh founding members of the community and uh. Councilmember Holloway brought up the idea of something to um commemorate uh the two pri- primary founders, Mr. Moisso. Who owned his family on the property, uh and it was the CEO of Rancho Mission Viejo and Mission Viejo Company. And and um Richard Reese, who was the mastermind, if you will, of, and the architect of. The layout of Rancho Santa Margarita, and so in kind of looking at some of those options, you you know, we did a very preliminary look into that. And uh that's when Councilmember Holloway, I I informed him that how much the bronze statues cost. Um and so in order to look at some other options, and there are other options that are much more economical, but still very, very. Uh nice and respectful, I but uh before we do too much work in that, talk with any kind of designer or artist. To do so, I I would need some direction to do that because it is something that is not currently in our budget. Um and it would likely, at the end of the day, be a little bit over my procurement authority.
Uh first of all, I I think, I think, I think it's a great idea, um uh Richard Reese is what was. The the architect of our uh city and one of the fears ever since Richard passed away. Is that some will forget about what he did and all the important things he did in the design of this city that we have to keep in mind on a daily basis. We don't want to deviate from Richard Reese's um, you know, thoughts, I I've said it before, if you walk around the lake. You're walking around Richard Reese's brain, that's that he he designed that lake and um everything around it, and not just that. The the entire city, I have a thought, as opposed to the bronze, cuz I like the idea of the bronze statues, but I know they're really expensive. Uh I have no problem looking into uh some sort of um artwork that would exceed procurement authority. But I was also thinking about the RSM Cares Arts Program, and I'm wondering if we can reach out to. Um Jim, who runs the RSM Cares Arts Program, to go to the schools. And maybe, I don't know, we have a photograph of Richard with Mr. Moisso or not, but I'm sure something could be created, if you will, where they could. Uh paint or 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 whatever the case may be, maybe they can create a piece of art uh that we could, the bell tower that. Future generations can see and and know a little bit about the history of this community, so. Um I I support the idea of looking into this, but I also think it might be a good idea to talk to RSM Cares about that. Thank you.
Other thoughts?
Councilmember Holloway, I I love the idea as well, I love recognizing people, especially people who have played such an important part in our city. Um would it be possible for staff to come back with some different options, um cuz maybe it's a a combination of.
I think that's kind of what they're asking.
Yeah, that's what I would love, that, what the mayor pro tem suggested, but something more permanent as well, um located at City Hall.
Absolutely, that's what we've been in the preliminary discussions were, I appreciate that.
If I could please, I apologize for interrupting, but this is not an agendized item, so I would caution the council to go too far in actively discussing different. Options and and potential outcomes here, I think that staff is like.
Great, I think what Councilmember Holloway was looking for is just to get some general direction to staff, make sure there's no, is there any objection to what's been proposed? I think that gives you the direction that you need, thank you, Mr. City Attorney for your wise counsel there.
And that, just to clarify, Jennifer, just tell the public, we have something in our rules and regs that. If a certain amount of staff time is needed, then you need more than, not just one council member can make that happen, could you just explain that?
It it's, it's been our practice that if something's going to take more than four hours of staff time, that it would need. Uh more than one council member to direct staff to look at uh that item, it's it's not codified anywhere, but that has been our practice.
Thank you very much to all of you.
Great, thank you, appreciate that, anything else, council colleagues? Okay, as I um had mentioned earlier. Uh we're gonna be adjourning tonight in memory of our good friend Christie Riley, who recently passed away, um before. Um doing so, I know we have members of the family in the audience, do any of you care to say anything, any? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to give you the opportunity, you sat through a long meeting, uh you're more than welcome if you'd like to say anything. Anybody? Yeah, so I'd ask that we observe a bit of a moment of silence as we watch this presentation. Uh one more time in memory of our good friend Christie Riley. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and do so in memory of our good friend Christie Riley. And our next regular meeting of the city council will be held Wednesday, June twenty fifth. At seven PM here in the city council chambers, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.